Call to order the school committee meeting, January 18th, 2024. Stephanie, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
This is Mr. Horwath.
Here.
Mr. Whitridge?
Here.
And Mr. Sereno?
Here. We're going to go to the reporter, the school committee chair. So tonight, we have our budget hearing, and I'd like to, first of all, thank you for coming. I appreciate that. Before we get started, I just want to quickly explain the budget process and how we come to a budget. What we're voting on tonight is an operating budget. That's what's been presented, and that's what we're voting on it. The second piece of our budget is what we call Schedule 19, which the town handles, and it's for insurance, pensions, and other miscellaneous things like that. So our funding comes from two places: tax dollars and state and federal funds. The tax dollars are infinite, and the funds are not, the state funds are not infinite. So we have Chapter 70 money, and so people understand what Chapter 70 money truly is. Chapter 70 money cannot be used for anything but schools. So if someone says there's X amount of money in Chapter 70, that all comes to the schools because it cannot be used for anything else. It's like Chapter 90 money that needs to be used for roads. It can only be used for roads. So I wanted to just explain that quickly to anyone. Once we get the budget voted on, I think that's when the work starts. You know, obviously, we present it to FinCom, and then we go to town meetings. So I just wanted to explain that quickly, and also wanted to let you guys know, as a district, we're moving forward. We're not looking at things in the past, what, who is here, who's not here. We're moving forward. We have Superintendent Hashem. He's available to talk to people. He's here. He communicates, and I think he's got a great plan for the district. So without that, I will turn this budget hearing over. So we're going to start the budget hearing right now with Mr. Hashem.
Yes, I presented to you last week the proposed budget. You have that in front of you. Everybody has a copy of that. There's only one note that I have that's a little, that's not even a difference. It's no monetary difference. If you look at the requests that came out, and in the restructuring of the inclusion at the middle school, it's at the high school, middle school complex, right on this worksheet right here. If you look at that, it says five teachers and five paras going to six teachers and four paras. That's actually, we have more than that many special ed teachers and more than that many para professionals, but for that program, it actually should be, we have four teachers and five paras now, and we're going to five teachers and four paras in that program. So it's the same delta. It's the same differential of money. It's just, it was four and five, and now it's going to be five and four.
Chief, hold on one second. Can you just kick that thing out of the doors? Nobody else can do it. Yeah, no, it's just, it's such a distraction. It's not even, sorry about that, Mr. Whitridge.
No, no, no problem. Does that make sense to everybody? So, but as far as the differential of numbers, it's still the $36,665. So we're taking a current para position, not getting rid of a para, but we're taking that position and making, having a teacher position instead. Otherwise, the budget that you see in front of you is the budget that I've proposed, so it's now up to you to open this up for any discussion that you have related to anything, if you have any questions.
Yeah. First, I'd like to say, we've all met separately with Mr. Hashem. We've all talked about this, but I'd like to turn it over to the public to see if there's any questions or concerns that we can answer for you. Not seeing any yet. Let's turn to the school committee discussion.
Absolutely.
So I'm sure we have some questions. Does anyone want to start?
I don't necessarily have any questions, but I do have a couple of things that, it actually bothered me from 2019. You know, we make some cuts, and then we ask for, we ask for a lot, you know? And I think it was actually, it was 2021 budget that we cut special ed, and we added all kinds of positions. And we all knew, deep down, we all know that it's not going to be sustainable. You can't do it, you know, because now we're in trouble with special ed. You know, we're out of compliance, and this is where we're at. So now, we come back this time for this budget, and we have a pretty, a pretty large contractual obligation at $1.3 million. And that's just to get us back to level funded, correct?
That pays for the contractual negotiated raises of the three units, yes.
Right. And I know it's an unpopular position, but I honestly feel that we have to start doing one or the other on these budgets. We either have to give out raises and just do business as usual, or get the things that we want and then skip a year of substantial raises, you know? And I'm not saying nobody deserves a raise, because I know everybody does, but we can't do both all the time, because we're always in this pickle where we have to ask for $3 million, $4 million. And I think I said it last budget cycle. Every time we go back there, we keep asking, can we have this? Can we have this? Can we have this? But we don't show anything that we've done to improve. We don't. You know, I know that we've made a little bit improvements this year, but the first thing FinCom's going to say is, okay, the money we gave you last year, what happened? What did it improve? Where are we going from there? And what are our answers going to be? You know, this is, this is what I have a problem with this budget, is just because it's asking for, we're dishing out raises, then we're asking for all this stuff with it, and it's almost impossible to do. As the chairman said, you know, Chapter 70 money, it's, hey, this is a whole big nut over there, and everybody thinks that there's Ebenezer Scrooge over there, holding piles of coins, saying, nope, none for the school. He hits a nail on the head. That money is for us, but we also have, it's like a credit card. Like, we have all these positions that we added through the grants. We still have to pay their insurance and their benefits, you know? So that bill comes at the end of the year all the time. So that's, a lot of the, the Chapter 70 money has to pay for the benefits, you know? And it's, that's part of the schools. I've heard one of the selectmen say before, and I think it's something worth looking into, is, you know, we take all that money, and we do the higher end over here, you know? You do the higher end, and we pay the benefits out of our budget, so we know what's going on. I feel like we just, we have a credit card, and we just keep saying, hey, hey, put it on there, put it on there, put it on there, and then the bills do it at the end of the year, and we're like, whoa, okay, we've got to ask somebody for some money here, you know? So I really think we need, I said it before, and I'll say it again, we need to change the way we do business, you know? It's, there's a human side of this with all of us, all these faces, everybody we know, we're all friendly, but then there's a business side that says, hey, listen, it's not sustainable to keep dishing out, you know, 3% to everybody, and then expect to have all these other positions filled that we need, you know?
So I would say, I would say that the contract before this, these raises, that's why they were given out, because it was in the contract to reopen the contracts once it came in. That's what we, that's what we did. We did what we told, what we put in the contract that we do. That's why we're here today with this.
No, absolutely, and I'm not arguing that no one deserves a raise, because I know everybody works hard, and, you know, everybody deserves a raise. Cost of living goes up, why shouldn't pay go up, right? What I am saying is that, you know, in, you know, my job, you know, I don't get 3% every year. A lot of jobs, we don't get, you know, we get what we get. It's a half percent or a percent. And I think that for the next budget cycle, and the next contract cycle, we should try to work in unison and say, hey, listen, okay, how about for the first year, you get X amount of dollars, but then make it heavy near the end? That way, we get what we want in that first contract, and then the second and third one is more about, you know, the teachers and everybody else, you know what I mean? Staff, everybody. So I just, honestly, I don't know. I know budgets are, everybody thinks they're complicated. I don't think it's that complicated. You know, I'm not the brightest guy when it comes to budgets, but I can, like I always say, I know that you don't spend, you know, $20 with only $10 in your pocket, expect somebody else to pay for it. You can't do it, you know?
Well, I think a part of the reason we're here, too, is we're taking, when those cuts were made to special ed and they were put somewhere else, what we're trying to do now is take those cuts and put them back into special ed, cut somewhere else. But the other thing that, what we're trying to do is when we look at special ed and the cuts that were made before, and what we're trying to do is, we're trying to make everyone whole, right? And we're trying to make it equitable for everyone across the board. I think, I agree with you. The budget cycle, it's never a good thing, but I think what it is, is we need to build the trust back. And I think that's what we're trying to do. We've got obligations to the students. That's the first and foremost, and the people that are in front of the students, I think, is the most important obligation we have, you know? So I think-
I agree. I'm not saying that we ignore the bargaining units, not at all, you know? I think that, and I may not say it publicly, but I think there's some people out there that think they would have to work with us on this, and to get, we want, it's going to help them by bringing more staff in, but we can't bring staff and give raises in the same cycle, is what I'm saying.
I understand that, but we also have to retain the teachers we have. That's-
Absolutely. After a year, no one's going to be leaving after a year. It's going to benefit them. It's like getting a raise, is what I'm saying. You bring help in for all these teachers. That's what we need. We need help, you know? We need more programs and stuff. We don't need to, you know?
You know, I don't want to revisit and rehash, you know, the past, but going back to the two negotiation cycles, the teachers really worked with us. And in the first negotiation cycle, they accepted a contract that was very unpopular amongst all the teachers, and we worked really hard together to make everybody understand that we had to have these cutbacks and whatnot. And we did make a commitment to them that, you know, we would reopen and look at things in the future. What you're saying, Mr. Whitridge, is 1,000% correct. We, you know, most important thing is investing in the children and putting teachers in front of them. But one of the biggest pieces to that is something that we fight every single day in probably every single industry, and that's recruitment and retention. It's very difficult to hire a person to either work at another company or come work at our district when, when they could go to another district and get, you know, much more of a rate, much more of pay. And we need to be inventive and try and do something to accomplish what we want to do, just what you just said, at the same time, being able to attract new teachers to the system, to fill these slots, to put these teachers in front of these kids that needed, to give our current staff a little bit of a breather. And it's that fine balance that we have to do to make sure that we're competitive with every other district.
Listen, I agree with everything you're saying, but the problem is the reality of it all. We're going to go there, and if they say, hey, this is what you're going to get. You're going to get $1.4 million, is to say. Then what? We pay the contracts, we pay the teachers, and then we get nothing else that we want. All I'm saying is, we have to alternate cycles, you know? It's just, I don't know. I know it's an unpopular opinion, I know that, but it's the only way to get ahead, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
The only way to get ahead is to alternate what we're doing.
Mr. Chairman-
It's not working, you know, what we're doing now isn't working. We come back every year. We say the same thing, you know, oh, we need more money, we need more money, but without any really reason how, where the other money went. Like, for instance, we had three vice principals at the high school. We're down to one and a dean, okay? That's, to me, is a pretty substantial savings, but where is it? You know what I mean? What have we done with it? Like, we have all these savings, but we have nothing to show for it. We downstaff. It doesn't make any sense to me.
We're actually not downstaffed. We're upstaffed, if you look at the budget.
Not where it's needed. We, listen, you can't have, you can't have one vice principal at that high school. It's not, it's not feasible, you know? It's not.
Yeah, no, no, no problem. One of the things I was going to say about the budget is every year, there's going to be cost increases, because a year-two teacher will become a year-three teacher. There's always, so there's never going to be a cycle where you don't have cost increases. This was one of the more unusual negotiating cycles we had, and look at Mr. Palmorini, where we essentially asked the teachers to approve a contract that had no raises in it, which was, you know, I credit my hat for the sell you must have done for that, and we extended that faith that we're going to come back and make this right, so we did it in two parts. So that contract, if we had established it in the beginning, the money would not have been there then. We were able to find a way to make it work. I think everyone agrees that classroom teachers, wherever you are in the district, whatever you're doing in the district, you have an amazingly difficult job that's only gotten harder year to year, and the thing I'll just say is, nothing happens in a vacuum. You can't say, okay, you know what, we can't do raises this year, so you're going to, here's the salary, because people are going to up and go to another district. And one of the complaints we get, especially on school committees, I know everyone on this other side sees it as well, if there's a vacancy, if you can't attract a teacher, you have a child in the classroom who's not getting the service they need. You have a child who's not in the classroom, they're in a cafeteria, because there's no teacher in front of them. So these are the things that we're trying to solve for. So I appreciate the predicament, because we're trying to do everything at once. Sometimes that's, that's the job, and we just have to find a way to make that work year to year.
Yeah, well, that's the problem. We do it year to year, and it hasn't worked.
Go ahead.
First of all, I just want to say thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you to Ms. Andrews and Mr. Hashem for putting this all together, and all the personnel that come together to put this together. I know this is not easy. I know it's also a touchy subject as well, but we also have to keep the public more informed, too, and parents need to start showing up more at these meetings. I completely understand what you're thinking at home, if you're watching this right now, while I work, while I do this, while I do that. I do, too. I have a full-time job, I have a part-time job, and I have another part-time job. So, but I do it because I watched a lot of stuff go on with my son that I didn't necessarily like. Do I think that the teachers deserve the raises that they get? 100%. I do. We are in a different setting now, and it is not, as Mr. Hashem said last week, it is not the blackboard, the pencil, and the notebook. It is not anymore. It is not. It is 2024. These kids are coming in with emotional issues. They're coming in with stuff on their plate that, when these teachers went to school, they weren't trained for that. They weren't trained for just that. They weren't trained to be part-time psychologists. They're taking on a lot, a lot. And to your point, Mr. Whitridge, I completely agree with what you're saying. I do understand what you're saying. We can't have this, and we can't have that. It's the same thing at the hospital, when we ask for a raise. Well, you want a raise, then your patient ratio is going to go up. It's just, it's just, it is what it is. The only thing that I think that we need to focus a lot on, though, too, is, we do need to focus on special education and adjustment counselors, because it's like with anything else. You're not going to put the walls up without the foundation. It's only going to carry on. It is only going to carry on. If these kids are going into the second, third grade and can't even read, what do you expect? It's only going to get worse going into the middle school, high school. You have to get ahead of this. There are certain areas that need to be, the money does need to be put in a little bit more. And obviously, special education is a personal thing for me, because I did have a son on an IEP, who's still on an IEP, and I'm battling with issues where he is at, too. It's not just Sogus. But the problem is, is we want to stand out in the schoolyard and blame the teacher, and blame this one, and blame that one. Are there not-so-great teachers? Yes. Are there not-so-great nurses? Yes. But the parents or whoever are taking care of these children, it is no longer, the school day does not, no longer exist as seven to three. It is a 24-hour job, and these kids have to be held accountable. I work a 13-hour day. I come home. You think I want to look at Joey's math homework? Not really, but it's what I have, but it's what I have to do. So as a community, we've got to step up, and we've got to start showing up at these meetings and voicing our concerns. You cannot continue to sit out in the schoolyard and complain what we don't have, what we're missing, what my child's not getting. Let me tell you, in three months, two and a half months after sitting here, and I've had the privilege of meeting with a lot of people who have taken their time out of their schedule, a lot, to sit and talk with me, kids, teachers, a bunch of people. Because if you're going to hand this to me in November, and you think that I'm going to know everything, what this means, I don't. I don't, and I'll be the first to admit it, but I am trying my hardest to understand what goes on. Now, I am not saying for parents need to know the whole school budget. That's not, but even just little things, they have to come and understand what goes into why we make the decisions that we make.
So I would say, too, some of the issues we're talking about aren't budgetarily, they're not concerns of the budget. There are other concerns that we have in the schools, right? When you talk about time on learning and stuff like that, there's other things that we can work on that will not affect the budget, will not affect the dollars and cents in this district. And that's what we're trying to do. That's what we're here for, right? At the end of the day, we spend a lot of time to try to make it right for everyone. It's difficult, and Mr. Whitridge is right. It's hard to do that. And I think when you look around and you look at what we have in this district, we, and I'm a people guy, it's all about the people. We have great people. We have great teachers, support staff, and what I think Stephanie's asking is, help out, right? Just, let's all work together to make, make what we can right, and, you know? The budget is, is difficult. It's, we don't have, every department doesn't have their own budget. There's one town budget. There's tax revenue that comes in, and as I said before, that's not infinite. That's a fixed, a fixed amount, and that needs to be divided between all the departments and the town. So, yes, are we asking for a lot? Absolutely. At the end of the day, do I think we're going to get it? No, but you know what? We've been here before, and we'll make it work for everyone. It might be difficult, but we'll make it work, so.
But I've also had many parents email, email me as well, not just about the budget, about school spirit, and that goes a long way. School spirit goes a long way. The kids feel it. The kids feel it when they don't feel it from the teachers, from the leadership. It goes a long way, and I've been saying that since day one. And yes, it's about numbers, and yes, it's about academics, but again, it's, it's social, emotional issues that sometimes, when they're in that building, that's the only time that they, they feel safe and that they feel, so, they feel it. I'm telling you, whether you think it or not, they feel it, because I have interviewed kids, and I would never put them on the spot, and they, they feel the lack of spirit. We've got this beautiful, brand-new complex. We need to start using it more, and it's just, it's a, it's a tough year that we're in. It's a tough year.
Well, I think we're starting to make that move. We've got BNS going up on Tuesday night for the championship team, so we're starting to look at things like that.
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM.
Chairman, can I say one quick thing?
Yes.
The budget cycle is also, it's really a 20-month cycle, if you think about it. We're at the very beginning of it. We're going to vote tonight our recommended budget. That's basically our sell. It's going to go to the town manager, board of selectmen. We have many town meeting members here. It's going to go to town meeting. It's going to go to the FinCom. The school committee's going to vote again in June, when we get our final number, to put our budget together. Once that budget's together, it's going to last for 12 months. You're going to see us amend that budget at every single meeting. We have, we have money over here, and now we need it over there, right up until, basically, I'm looking at Ms. Andrews, the last day of the year, we're going to be amending that budget. So this is really a 20-month process. We're at the very beginning of it today. I'm looking at you, Tom. If you remember, we did this in January of '20, and then COVID hit two months later, and as we went through the process, that document has changed.
But I would say, to what Stephanie was saying earlier, was the school spirit this year, I've noticed a significant increase. I really have. I'm going to say, I say it all the time, and I'm going to say it again, the Belmonte, I love going there, because that is what school should feel like, you know? And the Vets, they do an amazing job. Every time I'm there, it's like, it's a madhouse, because kids are going to the gym, they're going to the art, they're going to music, and it's just, it's a well-oiled machine. So I really, really think that, and I, believe me, I know everybody's working very hard down there, but they're doing a really, really great job at those, at the early levels, but they just, they just need more help, you know? But the school spirit thing, I'm going to say, Steph, I got the, like I said, the Belmonte, Vets, you feel it. And the high school's really, it's really coming around this year. This year, I definitely see a big, big difference in, in spirit up there, you know? So.
So before we vote, I think we had one person for a public comment. Yeah, that's okay. Just state your name and your address.
I'm Wendy Magliozzi, 41 Summer Drive. So I'm sorry, when you asked originally, I didn't, I-
No, that's okay. That's okay.
I guess I'm talking, I have a, I have a first grader at the Vets, and then I also have an eighth grader and a 16-year-old. But my concern, I guess, looking at the budget, and I understand what Mr. Whitridge is saying a lot, like, it's, it's almost like you can't get blood from a stone, so it's really hard. What's needed, you don't have the money. It's kind of like, I want a new car, but I can't afford it. So I get all that, but as a parent, looking at the budget, and if we don't get it, I'm concerned, as a lot of parents are, what does that mean for the kids? Like, how is that, are there going to be more cuts? I mean, I remember when Sabrina was at the Oak, she had Spanish. I mean, and I'm not going back, I'm not, but I'm just saying, like, it's just, it, and it's the way the world is, but it's just, it's, things get cut, like drama gets cut, this gets cut, and everything gets cut, and it's so unfortunate that education is a business. It's just, and I know it's the way it turned into in this world, and it's, it's sad, because it's, it's just heartbreaking to not be able to utilize and give the program. So I guess as a parent, my thing is, you go to FinCom, and they say, no, you know, Dad, I want, I want 50 bucks. Here, Wendy, I'll give you 10. So what does that mean for the future of the kids, I guess, and that, that's really, like, a concern?
So I think that's kind of putting the cart ahead of the horse, because we won't know until we know, right? So, and same with the budget, right? If we get all our budget money that we ask for, are we going to use it exactly what's in the budget? There might be more, we might need two more classroom teachers. So I think to answer that, we'd just be speculating and guessing. I don't want to do that, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Bill Palmorini, SCA president. I just want to make a couple of quick comments.
Sure.
First of all, going over this budget, my executive board of the SCA had some concerns, and they were addressed immediately by Mr. Hashem and Mr. Sereno. They met with us. We sat for over an hour. We went through the budget line by line, and we now understand fully what this board is trying to do. And we support this 100%. We are very pleased that we've now been invited, and this is the first time in my 38 years teaching, that we've been invited, and it's Mr. Hashem and Mr. Sereno's suggestion, that we have a committee and that we meet on a regular basis to go through these items. And as you said, it's a work in progress. The budget may have some changes, some slight changes as it goes along, and we, we are happy to be on board with that. So again, I want to give you my blessing. This budget, to me, is fair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Palmorini.
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, Peter Menugian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10, sat where you sit. I know it's difficult. I understand. I'm not going to question previous actions, but I want to remind everybody that the FY24 budget that you asked for, the school committee asked for, voted, was fully funded by Town Meeting Finance Committee. That being said, I have several questions. There's been some success with achieving grants, bringing grants into the district. How many, how much, how much of this budget, which I just received tonight, and I think it would have been a good idea to send this out to all Town Meeting members before tonight, maybe you'd have more than three of us here?
It was on the website.
Oh, got four.
We now, we did announce it was on the website.
Right, so, but that's, that's another point, but how many grant-funded positions are now being absorbed into the, into the budget that are now off grant? How much, how much dollars? How many dollars? Is it just approximation? That's, that's, that's a question that I'm sure will come up.
No, because we, we're trying to clean up the grant-funded positions.
Just to clarify, so you're talking that were previously grant-funded that are now being absorbed into the-
For FY25, are being rolled into the- For FY25, are being rolled into the budget? In dollars, not necessarily positions, but how much of this increase is related to what you're absorbing? For example, all-day kindergarten, is that grant running out?
That's been absorbed. Maybe if Pola, would you like Pola to?
Yeah, that, all-day kindergarten, yeah, 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 can you?
Go ahead.
Hi. As far as all-day kindergarten, as you recall, we used the ESAR funding as seed money. And then each year, as we got the turnovers, there was a commitment from school committee to use that turnover money to start funding those all-day kindergarten staff. So that's been absorbed in the budget through the years. Okay? Not in this current budget.
Are there any other?
Yeah, we, we, the district has tried to be as responsible as possible with the ESAR funding and not putting as many salaries as other districts did. So right now, coming back from ESAR that's running out would be roughly $300,000.
Okay, so $300,000 is, that was grant money is now going to?
That's from ESAR, and there's another, there's one other grant that could be $100,000 from early college.
Could be 400?
Could be 400,000 total, coming out of the grants.
Now, those positions coming out of the grants, that I assume they're full-time positions and receiving Schedule 19 benefits, such as health insurance?
One, three, three, four of them are. One is half of a position. We already have half of the funding already absorbed.
So, the point that is always made by Finance Committee, it's a valid point, is that the total cost of education in Saugus includes all the non-operating budget expenses, such as health insurance, such as vocational schools, such as Essex Tech. We used to send kids to Minuteman, I believe, wherever they want to go, whatever they want. So the total cost of education is not just this number.
Is not just the LA grant.
No, and I think we had that discussion at the beginning, with the Schedule 19.
So I want to conclude my comments, and I know we have some teachers and parents here, and in particular, the last parent that spoke, there's over $3 million sitting in a stabilization fund, that, and I'll read what that money can be used for. And I'm sensitive to what member Master Cole stated about children having challenges, and a lot of those challenges came out of COVID. And that's what this money, what Town Meeting voted, was to set that money aside, so that you could come up with programs. One, there's eight of them. One, to develop and provide enrichment programs outside of the school day, including summer school, evening school, before-and-after-school programs, not currently existing in the budget. So you have money available to come up with these programs. Two, to deliver at-home tutoring for students. So if Joey, if you're not ready to spend time with Joey on math, there's money there, so that someone can go to your house and do it after school. It hasn't been asked for, there's been no request for any of this.
So we do have the warrants for those. So we do. We have.
Three, to procure and administer norm-reference student assessments to identify individual student deficiencies in math and reading. The one and only time I met with the former superintendent, Ms. McMahon, I suggested to her that she start norm-reference testing in the third grade, particularly the Iowa test, so that when the time comes, you're going to be questioned, you've absorbed all-day ki, I'm a big believer in all-day kindergarten. It's one of the few things that research proves makes a difference. But without that data, it's hard to convince a community that may not be as well-informed about the research, that that's important. So norm-reference student assessments that you don't have can be purchased and administered. Four, to develop and implement parent guiding and communication and training programs that will help facilitate student learning success. So a previous speaker mentioned what parents are saying out in the schoolyard, train parents. Title I requires that there be parent training programs, or at least it did when I administered that program. But now you have money that you can train parents, parent training nights. How can I help Joey do better in math? How can I help Sabrina write? And R, how can I communicate better with the school district? Five, this is a big problem in many districts, particularly in Saugus, to supplement existing ESL, ELL learners, including but not limited to materials and properly credentialed staff to support these learners. You want to hire ESL staff? There's money there to do it. Six, to ensure access to technology for students who have been identified as not having such at home. Seven, to develop and implement extended-day programs for students as needed. And finally, this is a catch-all, where you could be creative, to develop any program deemed appropriate and proven effective, with the goal of bringing about student academic and social recovery from two years of remote learning. So this was passed, not this past Town Meeting, but the previous Town Meeting. And that money's available, and many of the things that I've heard here tonight can be addressed in a very creative way that will not, that would be outside of what's in here. It can be done. And I think Town Meeting is waiting, I know I am and several others, to see what you're going to come up with. And I hope that you do come up with some things to access those funds. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I thought we had some warrants, right?
We do.
Hi. Leedro, 25 Springdale Ave. First, thank you so much for your hard work on this. I know that it's a very unforgiving position to be in, to work on a hard budget. So I appreciate all of your efforts. Mine is a little less of an official kind of comment, just a little bit more to the idea of working within the budget that we currently have as it pertains to school spirit, which was brought up by a couple of members. I was just saying to Dr. Lukey that I just, you know, another year goes by with my kiddo at the Belmonte, and I'm just so impressed with the, you know, communication that comes out of the school, and the emails that we're getting, and the folks that are out in the morning, you know, waving us in and saying good morning, and, you know, letting my, helping my daughter out of, you know, her car, out of the car, and that type of thing. And, you know, if we do have to work within the confines of this particular budget, just, you know, keeping in mind how we can support our teachers that are in the position that they're currently in, to maintain that school spirit. You know, my daughter's doing an immigration project. They have a gold plate table in the cafeteria that kids get picked, you know, and you'd be amazed at, like, getting picked to sit at this gold plate table is like such a huge deal for, like, third, fourth, and fifth graders. They're like, I got picked for the gold table. Like, these small, little things, pajama day in the library was a huge deal this week. You know, I carpooled with four other kids, and they were like, we got pajama day. I mean, it's such a small, little thing that costs no money, right? But they got rewarded for being good readers, right? So I think that there's ways that we can build up our school spirit that are not as costly. And so if we do have to operate within smaller funds, I think that we can still, you know, keep the camaraderie high within those limited amounts of monies. Because I think our teachers and our faculty are killing it. Because, you know, the fourth graders that I hang around, which is a lot of them, you know, seem to really love it. And, you know, did you know that if you cut off your ears and turn your head, you wouldn't be able to hear right? I learned from Mr. Palmorini, who taught my daughter, who told me that she wishes that she had Mr. Palmorini every day of the week. So I just wanted to add that little tidbit, that we have some amazing staff, and the kids are learning a lot, and it's just these little bits that really make a difference. So I just wanted to add that in. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Garrelle. Ms. Garrelle.
Jurel.
Oh, Jurel. So, before you go, you're 100% right. Well, we talked about this before. We used to never do anything to help ourselves out, you know? It's just, we used to fumble over everything. And now, the little things are making a big difference. Like you said, I go, I pull up to the Belmonte, and I see Dr. Lukey out there, or they got, the gym teachers are out there, anybody's out there. They're actually waving traffic on. Same thing at the Vets. It's a huge, huge thing.
Absolutely.
But like I said, I'm going to stop talking, because Dr. Lukey's going to, people are going to start thinking Dr. Lukey's paying me. But they're doing an unbelievable job.
Yeah, they really are. And I'm not insinuating that anyone's saying that they're not. I just wanted to, like.
I just wanted to say you were right.
I wanted to boost them up, because I said to Dr. Lukey before we started, I wish I could publicly, like, hooray you. And then once you guys brought it up, I'm like, ooh, there's my in. I can just, you know, make sure that they get the accolades that they deserve. Because I'm just so impressed with how things have really.
And they're happy, too.
Yeah, and how things have really picked up.
You got a smile on their face, I'm like, oh, okay.
You know, it's just really great. And I feel really fortunate that my kiddos are, you know, are really loving it, and that my daughter is thriving here at the Belmonte. I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't ask for more.
I feel the same way about my kids, you know? They're doing a great job. It's just.
Yeah. And thanks to you guys. I know that it's.
It's good to feel loved over there, you know?
It can be a thankless position being behind that, those microphones, so.
I just want to add one thing. Mr. Palmorini, you can make a battery out of a potato as well. Is that correct?
Indeed, a battery out of a potato. That's right. Yep.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Palmorini, if I chop my ear off, I can't hear Ryan anymore?
Yeah, it's a certain, yeah.
It's almost worth it.
Absolutely.
My wife said the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, everyone. Frank Federico, Town Meeting, Precinct 7. I just want to say thank you for all the work.
Your address? We just need your address.
Oh, 7 Kirkland Street. Thank you, guys, for putting in countless hours of work. I know this isn't anybody's full-time job, and it takes a lot of dedication from the board. So I, for one, thank you very much for that. One quick question in regards to the budget. What type of, for those of us that may not know, what type of recourse do we have after the budget gets passed, to actually make sure the budget's implemented in the way that it's proposed? Do we have an audit committee, or who exactly is responsible for that?
For, for, sorry, through the chair?
Yeah.
Walk me through your question. I'm not 100% sure what you're asking.
So, as if Town Meeting and the Town Manager sign off the budget tomorrow, you know, this time?
Once it goes through Town Meeting.
Once it goes through Town Meeting, it gets implemented, you get the funding that you need.
And then the school committee, depending on the funding, that's when we, if we got total funding, then this is probably exactly what it's going to look like. Any, you know, any permutation of that, we sit at the beginning, once we get the funding, and try to put a working budget in place. And it's up to us, me, my team, to manage the budget on a day-to-day basis, and implement this with as much fidelity as we can. But again, there are going to be times where we have to triage situations, and we have to make adjustments. And that's where you have all the budget transfers here. But that goes through school committees. So they watch over the budget transfer process.
So I would say Mrs. Andrews would bring us, if there's any changes to the budget, it would come in front of us, and we'd have to vote on those changes.
So if there was some type of, like, say, wasteful spending, or something of that nature, it would fall upon the school committee to make sure that?
So because it's a line item budget, yes.
So I think you're asking, so like, say, the budget passed, and we had like $30,000 for supplies, then all of a sudden, the budget passes, we're like, psych, we're using that money somewhere else. Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to come from.
So that would fall upon the school.
Correct.
Yeah, it has to come through us.
And we would have to vote in an open session that we're moving the money from here to there.
Excellent. And then, would it be all right if I ask a question on behalf of Matthew Parlente, Precinct 2? He's unable to attend due to work obligations?
I don't see a problem.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, from Matthew Parlente, Precinct 2, he was curious about SROs in the schools, and if there's any money allocated to that. He believes that in the past, Town Meeting has allotted money for an SRO in the schools. Could you speak to that?
This was, that was a while ago, and there's no monies allotted for an SRO, but we do have SRO seed money on a warrant. I think what we need to do first, before we decide, before we do an SRO, first of all, an SRO is 100,000-plus insurance, so that's two teachers, right? So I think what we need to do is kind of figure out what the role of an SRO would be, because I think there's a misconception out there that we put an SRO in, and discipline problems go away, and this and that. That's not the case, because we have to do an SRO with the police department. So are we taking one of their police officers to become an SRO? Then they'd have to replace that. So there's a lot of work that goes into it. We're looking at it right now, and we hope to have it done this year, but I don't want to make any promises.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. Good, through you?
Yeah, sure.
The biggest problem we have, Mr. Federico, is who pays for it? Does the police department pay for it? Does the school department pay for it? You know, we all want one, but nobody wants to give up that money, because we, you know, the police department needs their staff, and we certainly need more staff. So it's hard to really sit here and say, hey, listen, you know, we really need those SROs right now. We need, what we need is more educational people, you know? Some, that's more what we need. And believe me, I've been in two other districts where we have SROs, and it's, they're unbelievable. But they're not disciplinaries by any means, you know? But they are a good resource for kids, especially at the younger levels. Like, they'd be great for the Belmonte and the Vets. You know, the kids really, really draw to them, you know? But again, it's, that is, to me, is, right now, it's a pie in the sky thing for us, because we just don't have the money for it, you know?
Yeah, it's where you put your resources.
100%. You know, if there was a grant out there, and somebody knows about it. We tried, I know, even the police department looked into it.
But that's a good use of the seed money as well. That's something.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Hi, everybody. Andrew Whitcomb, 212 Essex Street, Department 102. I am sorry to say I have never read the budget yet, but I wanted to add a little to what Mr. Rose said, because you reminded me of something. Just by happenstance, I spent a couple of hours today with Secretary of Education Todd Wyler. We weren't talking about higher education and other things, but one of the things I admire most about the guy is when he goes to visit elementary schools, and he goes to visit things, you know, like that he's playing basketball with the kids, or he's sitting at the table, this big, he's a big guy, but he, you know, it's his favorite part of his job is sitting with you guys, you know, when I, I should say, with the students. When I come down to a meeting like this, and we're watching Mr. Palmorini's robotics team give a demonstration, or, you know, the girls' softball team, or whatever it is, come in, you know, that lends, not to the school spirit of the kids, but it helps me as a taxpayer, as a resident, you know, be a little more inspired to come down here and watch something. Not just because their, you know, robotics team is fun, but it's nice to see what students are working on. You know, there's going to be a budget stress every Saugus, that's how it works. Town budget, school budget, doesn't matter. Nobody has enough money. To my knowledge, you know, the gold plate club is free. And, you know, we can have as many pajama days as we'd like. I'm pretty sure those don't cost the district extra. You know, sometimes it starts, sometimes it starts with the little things. And, you know, this goes back to a conversation I won't get into about higher ed that I've been having for the last 24 hours. But sometimes you need to lay those bricks to get the parents interested in the conversation. You know, if Susan comes home because she's, you know, she's thrilled about tomorrow's colored day, tomorrow's this, tomorrow's that, you know, maybe the parent's a little more interested. Maybe the parent wants to come down here and listen a little more, and then maybe that, when we have a meeting like this, there's a little bit more constructive stuff that the parents can learn, or somebody like me come down and give to you guys, or listen. You know, I always say, my problem with this town is, I go to a board meeting, and there's nobody else in the audience. But everybody with a Facebook account knows the right answer. That's my self-bust. Happy birthday, Ryan.
You're 100% right, Mr. Whitcomb. A lot of misinformation out there on Facebook, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh yeah, happy birthday, Mr. Whit.
Thank you so much. John sang for me. Are you going to sing for me?
No.
Hi, Jaclyn Agar, 96 Greatwoods Road. I do a lot of work. My son is at the Vets in kindergarten. I work with the D O there a lot. I do a lot down there. So I see the need that the teachers have, but I also see how amazing they are. My daughter was at the Belmonte last year. She's at the middle school this year. I am not as involved over there yet. But I just, I think it's consensus across the board from everybody that they need more help, right? So you agree, everybody in here agrees. And I don't know much about the budget. I looked over it, I've read through it a few times. I'm curious why, if last year, we asked for eight, and we were given eight, why are we asking for eight again? Why aren't we asking for, like, teachers? Like, when I look at this, it says, "Original, you asked for eight teachers in kindergarten." Is that what I'm understanding? Kindergarten teachers for the Vets?
Oh, you look at the Vets budget?
Yes, that's primarily where I spend my time. So, out of curiosity, your classroom teachers, nine. Kindergarten teachers, eight. I just am curious where, if it's consensus across, when I look at this, again, because I see, I know all the teachers down there, I know how many are in each grade, and all this, I'm curious, if it's consensus, you need more, why are we still only asking for eight? Why are we still only asking for nine? Why are we only asking for one more sped teacher? Or, I just, one more teacher assistant? Nope, I'm sorry, two more teachers assistant, but only for special education. I just, these number, again, I know you're asking for more money. That's awesome.
That's just, that's school, though. But we, you know.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, that's where I don't know all the ins and outs. But if it's consensus across everybody, that these teachers need more support, that there needs to be more bodies in the schools, why aren't you asking for more numbers?
So we don't ask for the Vets. The Vets is brought to us by the principal.
Okay.
So that's the principal's ask.
Okay.
So.
But isn't that something? But isn't that something that can be adjusted if you all sit here and speak with them?
Correct. It can be adjusted as soon as the budget's voted on.
Okay.
We can move things and, and add things as needed.
And Mr. J, and I did, I, I know I maybe put it the wrong, for the Vets, basically what we're looking to add, if we just follow this exactly, is a special ed teacher, three special ed pairs, an adjustment counselor, which is a teacher, and the ELL, and an ELL teacher, which is up on the top. So that's what we're asking for. So we're asking for not only, what we're asking for is support teachers to deal with the diversity that's in the classroom.
Right.
That we're talking about now.
Yes, which I understand. What I'm saying is here is it looks like it's, it's being asked for the same numbers.
And I believe, if, if, through you, Mr. J, I believe one thing you did also was instead of assigning people to particular buildings-
Yes.
So assign people on the district level so that if this person needs to go to the Belmonte-
You are looking to add more, that, those numbers that you said earlier, the five and four, whatever, are those the ones that you're saying?
No, no.
You are asking for more teachers, but you're, that's middle school, I thought.
No, if you're talking about the, that is middle school. If you're talking about the teachers that are FY, sorry, FY 24 to 25, that are staying pat, that's in the main part of it. The additional request is on page-
Four?
Is it four?
Yeah.
That's the additional staff that we're asking for, above and beyond what we have.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize for my misunderstanding of it all. I just, I kept looking at it and saying, why, why? I said, they need, they need it.
Yeah, no, they-
So you need no apologies.
No, 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 no.
But I just, they need, they, they all, to what others have said, they're amazing. The teachers, the kids, they love them dearly. Couldn't do it without them, but I just was curious why it looks like we're asking for what we have instead of asking for more when it's-
No, it was just in fact, that's the way it's done.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Okay, so moving on, we have a budget in front of us, proposed budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the school committee approve the superintendent's recommended budget of, correct me on the number if I'm wrong, 34,268,535.
Chair seconds. We have a roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ashen?
Yes.
Whitbridge?
Yes.
Yes. So, budget hearing is closed, back to new business. We have approval bills dated January 18th, 2024, in the amount of 738,548.87.
Motion, chair, proof.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Acceptance of minutes from the Saugus School Committee, open meeting from January 4th, 2024.
Motion, chair, proof.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of minutes of Saugus School Committee, open meeting from January 11th, 2024.
Motion, chair, proof.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't here, so I abstain. Acceptance of a $600 grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council and Saugus Cultural Council, Saugus Middle High School Podcast for podcasting equipment.
I'll make a motion, chair, proof.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Third is acceptance of a check for $2,959.43 from the Belmonte Early, early Belmonte Elementary School PTO for fifth grade field trip to North Shore Music Theater and third grade field trip to Boston Museum of Science Plantarium. Vote to be, have a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion and I want to go.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Third, we have acceptance of a check from O'Connor Studios, the La Belmonte STEM Academy for $3,113.
Motion, chair, proof.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, this just happened, just, just came up and there's some urgency to it, so we're gonna put it on the agenda. It's the Kids Come First program. We're looking at a deficit in the program, so we're looking to take the cost from $15 per day to $18 per day for morning, afternoon, and then from $10 to $13 for the sibling rate.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, but actually, if you want, I don't know if you want to second the motion before we discuss, I just wanted to add something.
Yeah, no, that's, second the motion.
We had a finding set up earlier tonight where we discussed this. I just want to point out that in an age where it seems like everything's more expensive, this program has not increased in cost. We were trying to estimate back. We don't think it's increased in cost in about 10 to 12 years, but it's been stuck at 15. We were looking at the value of the program tonight and what's offered, and it's an amazing value. We never want to raise prices on anything, but I feel like this is a very modest increase to keep the program solvent.
Can we do a roll on that?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
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 Yes. Lastly, before we get to public comment, I just want to say, BOTS, the drama club is, they're performing Thursday, February 4th, Friday, February 2nd, Saturday, February 3rd, all at 7:00 PM. Guys, our drama club at the high school is fantastic. It, it is like world class.
Middle school.
Middle school, I'm sorry.
They're excellent.
Yeah, they're excellent. Broadway, save your money from Broadway, go to this. So next, we have public comment. Before we close tonight, I-
Mr. J?
Yeah.
If I may?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. This goes to talking about the spirit that we've talked about and I'm sure that if Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Hashem wants to comment on this, but next Tuesday at 6:00 PM, that's been in the works for a long time, we're gonna have a banner ceremony at the high schools that, replacing some of the banners that were at the old gym, you know, celebrating our championship teams. And the athletic subcommittee has been working on this project for, oh, the better part of the last two years with concept and funding and whatnot. And, you know, I would be remiss if I, I didn't mention the true champion and captain of this mission. I sit in his seat right now, Mr. Dennis Gould. Dennis has been nothing but one of the biggest supporters of our athletic programs since he's joined the committee. Dennis has been committed to this town for a long time and he's still committed. He's a part of that committee. He's spearheaded getting these banners put up and, and he's tenacious, he won't stop. So I want to give Mr. Gould so much credit, along with the athletic subcommittee, to see this to fruition. But next Tuesday night at 6:00 PM, there'll be the banner raising ceremony for the championship teams that have made their accomplishments at the new Belmont, at the new-
Complex.
Complex. So since the complex has been open, any championship team that has won, there's softball, there's girls soccer, there's-
Basketball.
Basketball, and it goes on. They'll be recognized with a memorial banner that will hang in the gym, you know, forever now. And it starts with them and we thought it would be a great opportunity to showcase those students. I bring this up now because I want to invite all of those championship team members as well as their parents. And again, once again, I'd be remiss without thanking the athletic subcommittee, but especially once again, Mr. Dennis Gould for spearheading this. Mr. Sullivan, if you want to talk about how the ceremony's gonna work or whatnot?
Sure.
It's specific as possible.
So it'll be, you know, we have an email chain going on with the agenda, but it is scheduled to start at 6:00. We're hoping to start letting people in about 5:45. We have practices and things beforehand, need to set it up. But we'll have a short agenda with a few people speaking, talking about the teams and talking about all the, the work to get the banners. The band should be, you know, playing the National Anthem and a few other songs, so it should be a nice ceremony. Mr. Hashem and I promise to try and not be long-winded when we speak, which isn't always our forte, but, you know, we'll try to keep it to about a half an hour because we know families are busy. But we think it'll be a really nice opportunity. We've had a lot of athletic success in the four years that the building has been open and these are students who persevered through COVID. They played in strange seasons at times, they played under strange restrictions, and it really is a, a chance to honor all of them. We tried to pick a night where there were no varsity games in any sport to try and get as many people there as possible, so please do come to the middle high school for 6:00 PM on Tuesday night. It will be up on the second floor in the, in the gym. Thank you.
Mr. Serena, once again, I do really want to thank Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Hashem, Athletic Director Pillsbury for helping to get this all put together and, and as well as the business community for their donations to make this happen. So once again, on behalf of us, I'd like to thank them all and especially Mr. Gould for his hard work.
Thank you. I'm gonna let everyone say wherever, but before we, we close, I want to thank Mrs. Andrews and, and Mr. Hashem. I want to thank Mrs. Andrews for her work on the budget and the stuff she does. It, it's budget season. Call her on a Saturday, she's around. Call her on Sunday, she'll have Sunday dinner, she'll be working on the budget after that, so, yeah, thank you. And, and mostly, I, I want to thank all you guys out there for showing up and, and giving us your opinions, giving us what you think, because that, your, what you tell us is value to us. Because I for one, don't have students left in the school. Mr. Whitbridge and, and Mr. Hatch and, and, you know, hear things and, but I think the more parents and the more people that comes to the meetings for us, it's so, so valuable to us. And speaking for me, I just know there's some things I haven't heard before, some things that maybe are misconstrued, or people don't really know. And I think by having these meetings and, and you coming and voicing your concerns, it's, it's very, very, very important to me, so thank you.
Oh, yes, Chairman, thank you. You know, I want to say one thing too is, you know, we really got to start with the, the mentality that it's schools versus the town is, I'm gonna tell you, you know, you guys all know I work for the town. There's not one person on that side of town that does not want to see these schools succeed. There's, most of the people I work with have kids in these schools. There's nobody over there going, hey, don't give them any money, you want to see them all fail. Everybody wants to see this be a success, but we, there's only so much money to go around. So if we all go in there with the torches and we're gonna burn the place down, it's, it's happened for the last, how many years? You know, it doesn't work and no one over there is against us, trust me on that one. But I do want to say one thing, the snow, Steve Napolitan did a great job getting-
He did an amazing job.
You guys don't even know the half of what he had to do. He was here till, was it 1:00 in the morning? His, his-
I think, yeah.
It was a mess, but you know what? He, he worked hard, he worked through the night and he got it open and we were able to have school the next day. I just don't fully think that everybody understands how hard that job is to get snow done. It's, especially when it keeps falling. We had it the other day, it was-
Just kept falling.
Yeah, it just kept coming down. And then at pickup time, it's, it's frozen rain coming down, you know? So it's, it's impossible to keep up with it, but he's a one-man show and he does a great job. So I just wanted to give him a shout out for that.
I'll let him know.
And Mr. Hashem too, I'm gonna say he's probably the first superintendent I've seen that, that is out at 5:00 in the morning driving around making sure that schools are safe. So that goes a long way. The little things.
No, no, no bike.
The little things. So, yeah, so thank you to you, Mr. Hatch.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And thank you for, I was standing on the side and Mr. Hatch drove by a puddle and splashed me when I was-
[laughing]
So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
But other than that, I just want to say thank you for everybody for coming too. And again, you know I love you, right, Mr. Pomerini? All right, I just want to make sure we're good here because I never gives to teachers. I love you guys. So, go ahead.
I just want to know how he makes the potato into a battery. It's interesting, isn't it? I just want to thank everyone for coming out. There is an empty seat out there tonight. Mr. Pomerini, I think, said it well earlier, that he had a question about the budget, he was concerned. He sat down and he got an answer. And like Mr. Whitcomb said, Mr. Rose said, you go on social media, everyone is an expert on everything, and when you look at the details of it, there's not a lot of truth to it. So thank you for coming out, thank you for being informed. Please keep doing it. This is like a 20-month cycle, we're in month like three. And, and as things need to be changed, we're gonna change them, so thank you, everyone.
Do you have a motion?
Motion, chair, adjourned.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.